The call is meeting in order. Will Cox shows that all council members are present with the exception of Mayor Seymour, who's out of town, and Councilman Alsop, who has a scheduling conflict. We'd like to welcome all of you that are out tonight with us in person and those watching on television or other electronic means. Tonight, the invocation will be given by myself, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by council member Triton. And please stand if you would like to join us. Our kind and gracious heavenly fathers, we come before thee this evening for the regular meeting of the Sholo City Council. We ask that thy spirit will be with us, that we will deliberate diligently on the items that come before us. We ask a blessing on the first responders in our communities. We ask a blessing on those that are deployed with the armed services and watch over their families in their absence. Again, we thank you for this opportunity, and we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Triton. Our next item is show, I'm sorry, next item is a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that is not on the schedule may do so at this time the city council cannot discuss. Items cannot be presented directly to individuals on the council, and please limit your comments to three minutes. I see no one moving forward. We'll move on with the agenda. Tonight, we have a presentation regarding the city receiving the Excellence in Action Award. Mr. Wilcox.
My name is Ken Wilcox. I'm the environmental manager for the city of Sholo. Been privileged to work here for the last 19 years. I had the honor of going to Austin, Texas, and receiving an award on behalf of the city. We were nominated by Mike Krebs with Pace Engineering for the award, and it basically deals with the upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant and our wetlands, which is, this was from the American Water Reuse Association, which was recognizing people who had innovative ways of reusing reclaimed wastewater. And so we have a short video clip that was presented at the conference, and Mel could Better than what it was before we did the plant upgrade. That's the reason that we received the award. And it's a very nice award, has four different colors, and it's interesting, the word water reuse, they use the R in water to spell reuse. So they're reusing the R. But I just wanted to recognize, there were some people who thought that this was my award. This is not my award. Again, I was just the designated receiver. This began back in 77, when Pintel Lakes was created, largely due to the work of Mel Wilhelm, Adrian Hill, who was a district ranger at the time, and Alan Severson, who actually passed away during that, and since then, it's referred to as the Alan Severson And Jack O'Neill with the Game and Fish did a lot of work on that. The Public Works Director at that time was Rob Emmett. In 1985, they added the repairing areas on South Mar, or excuse me, and the Redhead Marshes. In 2014, the current, most of the current city council members, Public Works Director Bill Cop, with the help and the design of Mike Krebs and Young Doe with Pace Engineer, began the construction of a new treatment plant. It was finished in 2016. It was built by PCL contractors. And again, this was in partnership with the Forest Service, Ed Collins, the district ranger, Tina Swanson, who was basically a contact that we worked through, Dave Kegel and Eric Hodle with the Game and Fish. And I must say that I was helped tremendously with my staff, Jack, Derek, John, and a host of others who have served Public Works. And so this is the city's award, and is earned because of the efforts of all those that I have mentioned and many more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions before he leaves?
Okay. Now, I don't have a question, but I would truly like to thank you, Ken Wilcox, Mike Krebs, and Mike Krebs. I want to thank you both for their participation with the city. I know that this award is well deserved, and you guys have worked, all of you have worked extremely hard to make this a place that is a safe, safe drinking water, safe everything for the city. So, thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Welcome. It's been my privilege.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation from Navajo County regarding public safety. I'll turn the time over to Chairman Williams.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, council members, Mr. Mutter and others. Thank you for having us here today. Congratulations on that well deserved award. I have a few people with me today. First and foremost, I brought my bodyguard and my buddy, my 10-year-old son Josh, who's here. We also have a few others from the county team, our county manager Glenn Keppart, Assistant County Manager Brian Leighton, Paul Watson, our Economic Development Director, and then Brad Carline, our county attorney here. But I'm here in my capacity as supervisor of District Four, and to, one, thank you for the ongoing partnerships. We have a great partnership with the city of Sholo. We appreciate you, we're better because of you. I wanted to give you an update on some things that are coming up. A proposition that will be on the ballot in November, Proposition 419. Just a quick overview before I invite Brian Leighton up and then Brad Carline as well. As you know, over the last decade, the county systematically trimmed and looked for ways to be more efficient in response to the recession. It's been a, it's been a good thing to look for ways to be lean and efficient in our government. Over the last 10 years, the county's cut about 16% of its workforce. Currently, we're healthy, and if things would stay as they are in the economy, we'd continue to be healthy. But there's some challenges coming down the road related to the coal-powered industry, particularly with NGS, the Navajo Generating Station, that will shut down at the end of 2019, and then its impact on the Peabody Mine in Navajo County, and then coupled with the closure of Choya Power Plant that will be a few years after that. And so we see those challenges coming down the road, looking for ways to address those challenges, and with that, we'd, I'd like to invite, with your permission, Vice Mayor Brian Leighton up, our Assistant County Manager, to give an update, and then Brad Carline afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, council members, thank you. If we could bring up that presentation. So, just a quick visual recap of what the chairman introduced. As we talked about last time during the recession, the county had some tough obstacles, a lot of loss of sales tax, property tax. We had state cost shifts where the state actually turned around and asked counties to pay for departments such as the Department of Revenue and Juvenile Services. And then we had the state retirement plans, which we're all under, right? And none of us have control over the state retirement plans, and we're bound by those. And we, just like the city, we saw tremendous increases. In particular, there, the public safety retirement plan went up over 254%. And as we all encountered, and businesses encountered it as well, was increases in healthcare costs. And as the chairman said, we cut 16% of our workforce, about 127 jobs. We reduced capital spending, so a lot of that belt tightening, I think was a good thing. It was a good thing to reexamine why you spend money and where you spend money. And also using technology, everything mundane from not printing paper paychecks to drone technology, which is especially helpful in engineering and in public safety. Last year was a little different.
You said you cut 127 jobs?
That's correct.
And that was last year? Over how long of a period was that?
Thanks for the question, Vice Mayor, Councilman. That was from the start of the recession, 2008 until now.
And then after you made that comment, you said it was a good thing. So I just, oh, I'm trying to see how that's a good thing, but, okay. Thank you.
Well, yes, and again, it's that reexamining, reexamination of why you spend money, where you spend money, right? And it was tough, especially here last year. We had to reduce another $2.5 million. We reduced entire programs. We closed the juvenile detention facility, and we closed the county attorney child support program. I've been asked, you know, why those two in particular? It's specifically because those are the two last programs that we had that weren't specifically mandated by the state. So we've trimmed out everything that we can at this point. As the chairman introduced, we have some tough challenges, and were it not for these challenges, we are on the path for a sustainable budget for the future. Because of the hard choices, the difficult times that we've passed through, when the Navajo Generating Station closes down, that impacts the Canyantan Mine, which is in our county. That's $1.6 million in sales tax for us. As Choya Power Plant closes, we have property tax. In total, it's about $2.5 million plus about $600,000 in the state retirement plan increases. So, and we talked about this last time, if we were just to balance the budget by reducing expenditures, that's 20 to 25% of jobs. And as hard as those first 16% of jobs were, this would cut into services tremendously. And so we've asked ourselves, you know, how do we do that? Because right now, visually, we do have a balanced budget. With the $2.5 million loss of sales tax and property tax, it puts us out of balance. And again, if we were just to cut expenditures, cut staffing, you know, what does, what does that look like? Now, one option there would be to, instead of just cutting services, would be to replace those lost revenues. And so the board asked us to walk through each of the revenue sources that the county has and analyze those. Could we increase, can we increase? Do we have the authority to do that? What room is there? Is there ability to pay at that point? So we had a very good discussion, and there is one tool that's available for us, and it's a jail district. So, on July 10th, the sheriff came before the board, recommended the formation of a jail district. That started a process. The board approved to move to that next step in the process, which was August 14th, we had a public hearing, had a lot of folks come and speak in support of that. We did not have any comments in opposition to that, and that set it to the next step, which is putting it on the ballot. And that'll be November 6th, and it's Proposition 419.
Ask real quick, one, I gotta, before you keep going, what, is it changing the name? What does it mean to be a jail district and not a jail? What did that do? Because we, you said we created a jail district. What does that mean?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me, let me explain here. If we go back to the PowerPoint, I'll show you. So, we're beginning the presentation, but here, let me get into the jail district. So it's Prop 419. It's a secondary taxing district, so it's a sales tax, a one-third cent. It's a tool that's been around for a number of years. Eight other counties use a jail district. So, again, it's not so much about a jail, it's a tool. It's a means to an end that we have available to us, and frankly, it's the only tool that we have available to us. It's, it's a tool here, is it shows it's a one-third cent sales tax, it does not increase property tax. And as a reminder, we have the fourth lowest property tax in the county, and it's not intended for jail construction. But it does, here's, you know, as your local PDs, as you make an arrest, the sheriff has to take felonies. But a misdemeanor, it's up to the local city or town whether or not to incarcerate on a misdemeanor. And I, you'll see up here on the chart, in 2017, this is a pretty typical year, Sholo spent about $113,000 in jail fees. So when you have a jail district, that means the funding source for the jail comes from that jail district, and you're no longer allowed to collect jail fees from cities and towns. So that actually goes away. So that $113,000 that you spent in 2017 would actually stay in your community. The term of the jail district is 20 years. So if you just draw that out, it's a less than $2.3 million that would stay in the city of Sholo during the term of the jail district. You see there, we have, there's eight other counties that currently use a jail district. So this has brought us to the next phase of the discussion, which is what happens if a jail district does not pass? For us, and if we have to cut services, public safety is what's very concerning, and the sheriff is, we've gone around, the sheriff has, has shared these concerns with, with our residents, is he's very proud of the progress that he's made on reducing response times. And if, were he to lose upwards of eight patrol deputies, that would greatly impact his ability to respond. Put that in perspective, eight patrol deputies is the size of the patrol district for Winslow and Holbrook combined. And the sheriff can't just decide not to patrol in that area, so that just means everything else just kind of thins out. He's concerned about his presence at schools outside cities and towns. The sheriff is the primary responder for schools, and he's very proud that he's developed a routine. So his deputies do go by the schools, there is a visible presence at the schools. He's also concerned about backup to local police and cities and towns. We're all smaller agencies here in Navajo County, and we, there's a lot of synergy in law enforcement in some of our cities and towns. In the evenings, the sheriff is the only backup for local PD, and vice versa. And as we spoke with Timber Mesa the other night, they reminded us that the safety of fire and EMS is also very much tied to law enforcement, because as they arrive on a scene, they need law enforcement there directing traffic, keeping them safe as they're helping our residents. So those are some of the concerns that the sheriff has shared, and I'd like to invite up our county attorney Brad Carline to speak about the concerns that he has.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I kind of get to give you an example of how it actually impacts one of the offices, my office, the county attorney's office. I came into office along with Casey in 2008, just as this recession is hitting, not the best of times. Definitely changed what I thought we were going to be able to do, because back then, I had 17 prosecutors for the cases that we had. Today, I have on the books the ability to have 12. I have 10 that are actually working for me right now, and I've had these two vacancies for pushing nine months and having trouble filling them. About three months ago, I was interviewing a young prosecutor who worked down in Maricopa County. He had a felony caseload in their eastern jurisdiction out in the Mesa area. And I asked him, how many felony cases do you have? He said 27. Doing the interview with me was my sex crimes prosecutor, handles all the crimes with the kids that are molested, physically abused, raped. I asked him, how many cases you have? He said 86. I turned to my other side, and I had my serious physical crime prosecutor that handles my murders, my ag assaults. Asked him how many he had. He said 83, including four pending murder cases. So we resolved one of them since then. That young man's eyes got big. If the jail district does not pass, and we lose the revenues without finding another source to make them up, that $2.5 million, that is going to cost me three more prosecutors. Not changing the number of cases I got to deal, but it's changing the number of people that I have to protect our victims, to obtain justice, to keep the values of our community. We have a good partnership with all the municipalities in Navajo County. We have an agreement where the Navajo County Attorney's Office handles all of your misdemeanor. Everywhere else in the state, the municipal governments handle their own misdemeanor cases, and it's costly. You have to have your judge, your municipal judge, you have to provide public defenders for those cases that require it. You have to do all the victim service notifications, you have to have a prosecutor. Currently, I'm doing the misdemeanor cases in the Sholo Justice Court, so I'm doing your misdemeanor. Court time alone, on a Wednesday, I'll show up at the justice court at 8:30. If we're lucky, we've gone through the docket by noon, 12:31. In the afternoon, we have our bench trial, and that's just the time in the court. We probably have another day and a half of prep time, going through the files, contacting the victim. All of that would come back to you, come back to Pine Top Lakeside, come back to Snowflake Taylor, Holbrook, Winslow, because I will have to give those up, because that won't be a priority anymore, not compared to the 1,100 felony cases we filed. So those come back to you. Part of what Navajo County gets back from Sholo and the other municipalities is you pay for part of my cost to cover those case, part of the clerk cost and others. I receive enough money from the municipalities to basically pay for one young attorney. So instead of losing three attorneys, I'm going to end up losing four. I'm going to go from 12 to eight. So not only do I have to give up the misdemeanors that that occurs, I'm going to have to decide what felonies that I can't afford to prosecute, because I'm going to have to triage cases as they come through. Of course, the homicides, the rapes, the child crimes, those are going to be our priority. Then I'm going to have to look at the burglaries and the thefts. If it's somebody who's a frequent flyer, yeah, I'm going to target them, but if they're not, I maybe want to have to look at not pursuing at this time. You talk to Casey and anybody in law enforcement, our jails are full of people that 60 to 80% have mental health issues or substance abuse issues. The other ones I'm going to probably drop or not pursue right away are those drug cases, which are then going to escalate, because we're not going to be able to get them in the system to get them treatment, be it mental health or substance abuse treatment. So we're not going to have them in drug courts, we're not going to be sending them to change point to get them to help, to change their lives, so they don't come again and again into the system. Our quality of life, I think, is going to change if I have to make those decisions. One of the things I love, and I'm a resident of Sholo, one of the things I love is I feel comfortable in my home. I don't know, in a couple years, if I'm down to eight prosecutors, I will feel comfortable in my home, because I know now, those that need to be off the street, I can get off the street. I don't know if I'll be able to continue to do that. So I think the consequences of not passing this can be very severe. We'll do what we can. We've done what we could these last 10 years, but there's no place else to cut, except not to prosecute. If you have questions, I'd be glad to ask them, otherwise I'll churn it back over to Chairman Williams.
I think I just learned something. Did you say that our justice of the peace does not handle misdemeanor cases?
No, your justice of the peace handles all the misdemeanor cases.
And what do you handle?
I handle all the misdemeanor cases. The justice of the peace is the judge. I'm the prosecutor that brings the cases to court. There are some cases like DUIs where automatically the defendant, because there's mandatory jail time, has a public defender. So a public defender who works for Navajo County will represent them.
You get every town that there is?
Every town. But if you go to, you talk to your counterparts, say in Pace, any municipality, any crime that occurs within the boundary of that municipality goes to municipal court with a municipal prosecutor, with a municipal public defender. Springville, they have that system. Eager has that system. St. John's has that system. Navajo County is unique in the partnership we formed to be more efficient in how we handle it. Currently, your city attorney Morgan Brown comes in and handles your municipal ordinance cases. The Morgan and I often cross paths on Wednesday mornings. We would be crossing a lot more path if he was handling all the misdemeanor cases that come to this court.
Okay. Comment. So, Brad, so the way it's going now is a good thing, right? Except financially, I understand that part, but as far as handling what you're handling, bringing in, it's a good thing. We don't want to do it like St. John's and...
No, the partnership makes sense. It is much more efficient than me and Morgan bumping shoulders, trying to get a cases up there, having Judge Price and Judge Patterson starting next year, switching hats between a municipal judge to a JP or doing things on different days. I got economy of scale that helps me do it. I have a full team of victim advocates. Not only do we send out the notices, but we're actually able to have a victim advocate in that courtroom to help those victims understand the process, to help those victims articulate their feelings and thoughts to the judge at the time of sentencing and at all other stages. You would probably not be able to provide that without a great cost. I can do it, because that advocate does Snowflake Taylor, Sholo, Pine Top Lakeside. So I can justify a full-time person doing just misdemeanors for that area. You wouldn't, you would be sending out the notices probably the most, or maybe you would choose to spend the money, but it is quite expensive.
So, it would cost us money, is what it sounds like.
Yeah.
It would cost you significant money. You had a...
I was kind of getting to that point, but I wanted to hear that part of it first.
It was about 18, 15 years ago, you ran a municipal court for a while? So, I don't remember if Mr. Mutter was the county manager then or not, but there is a big cost.
I know he was still in the city council, we do know that part.
Talking about Kelly, I hope.
Yeah. Childbirth. Okay, thank you.
There's, if 419 passes, there's a lot of benefits to the municipalities. As Brian pointed out, the jail fees that you're paying, they go away. If it doesn't pass 419, you'll still pay the jail fees, and you're going to be taking over some costs for prosecuting misdemeanors.
And just one comment before you come up here. You guys, you're so passionate about this thing. I would, I know you're going to do a lot of going around and pushing it out there, but it seems like you need to get it on the screen and make a little short, passionate, like, I mean, you're like veins, I mean, it's very passionate, and I see why. If Casey was here, he'd probably be the same way. So it makes sense, but it'd be nice, besides doing what you're doing, maybe make a little short video and get with Mel and do something to, because people do watch that quite a bit.
Yeah, we're trying to get out, because when we talk to people, maybe their initial reaction is, is a tax. No, that, that's exactly how... But when they hear about it, what the money would be used for, how it ensures a continued quality of life in our communities, why we live here, they understand. And then when they see the graphic that on a $6 hamburger meal is 2 cents, they're going, yeah, I can afford that, to keep our quality of life and keep the public safety at the level we have now.
So on that slide that you, that you said earlier, that you can use, it's a third percent tax, but you can't...
One third of 1 cent.
One third of 1 cent, but you cannot use it for building, add it onto the jail, or you're good if you...
We could, but our jail is big enough now. It's big enough now that we rent out space to help balance our budget now. We don't need more space. You know, the criminal justice system is changing to less incarceration and more treatment, which is where it needs to be. We may not be doing the treatment if we don't have the money, but we don't need more jail space. What we need to do is find... What we need to do is find a funding source for the jail to free up money to let us continue to run our other programs in the public safety and county side. So all this is doing is adding to our pool, it's got to be spent at the jail, but the legislature has decided that our maintenance effort is such a level that they went in the past, so that would free up basically enough money to match what we're losing when Navajo Generating closes its doors and we lose the cell tax on the coal, and when Troya finally shutters for good and we lose that property. No other questions? I'll turn it back to Chairman Williams.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad, very much.
Just real quick, if we go back to the PowerPoint. So again, as Brad shared with you, this is not a financial windfall for the county. It makes us whole, it balances us, it's a net effect. So that one-third cent will actually bring in a little bit more than two and a half million dollars, but please remember that we lose the jail fees, which is about four-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars a year. We have the increases to state retirement, so when you net it out, it levels us about two and a half million dollars. And as Brad talked about, we have just a few examples here of what that means to individuals, and this is not insignificant to folks, but I think it highlights that on the range of purchases, we have our residents, we have all the visitors that pass through I-40, come up to the mountains to play, they're participating as well. And you see, you know, food items, even a hotel stay, a hundred and twenty dollars adds on forty cents. So it adds up and it helps us create a funding, a sustainable funding source for public safety. And so the message that we're trying to share is a yes vote means that we have a sustainable funding source for law enforcement and public safety that isn't dependent on coal, and it maintains the level of services that we have today.
Vice Mayor and council members, we appreciate the time you've given us on this. I feel that maybe just sum it up one way that hasn't, hasn't been explained this way, and for those that may be watching that aren't quite familiar with, with budgets, public budgets and things like that, I'll explain it this way. Over half of the county budget goes to public safety, which I include the sheriff's department, prosecution, courts, legal defender's office probation, over half of the county budget is public safety. Over the last decade, as we've trimmed, we have cut in every area, except for the sheriff's office has not seen any cuts. We've tried to cut in areas that the public don't feel it on a day-to-day basis. And so, and a lot of things the public probably didn't feel the cuts at the county. If that two and a half million dollars, when that is lost revenue and it's coming, if that's not replaced, the county is forced to then begin to dip into our largest expenditure, and public safety would certainly have to be a part of that. We're looking at a twenty to twenty-five percent cut across the board, which is public safety that's been talked about in every other department as well. If four-nineteen passed, Proposition four-nineteen passes, what that does is, from my perspective, a new tax isn't, isn't real exciting. I don't think it is to anyone. But one of the reasons this seems a little more equitable to me is it's a sales tax, meaning everyone pays it, including those that visit. It's not just those that are property owners paying it. So from my perspective, it seems a little more equitable that way. We have a lot of visitors that come up, they would be contributing as well to that. The money that's, that is raised in the, if Proposition four-nineteen passes, that goes into that jail district, what it does is it frees up money from the general fund that's currently going to fund the jail, which is the largest expenditure in all of public safety is the jail. It frees up that money to go back to public safety in the other departments, that's how that works. So the money has to be dedicated to the jail. When Proposition four-nineteen passes, it frees up money to go back into the general fund to pay for these, some of these other services. Question?
Yeah, um, you know, once the jail district is developed, and right now it's a third of one cent, what is the process that the county would have to go through to increase that amount? I think there's sometimes a fear that once you put into place something like this, that it is automatically raised by the county supervisors or whatever. Is there a process of voters to have that input?
Brad's going to answer that. The max is the one-third of one cent. That's the max. It cannot be raised under the current statutory scheme. I believe that if the legislature were to someday change that and say moved it up, that it could be a half cent, would have to go back to the voters again at that time, because it's not what they had voted upon. So it would always take any voter input in order to increase it, but right now, the statutes, we would be at the max, it would be permissible under the statute.
Any other questions?
Just a quick, one more, actually. So the two and a half million you're talking about, that's kind of a guesstimation on how are you coming up with that figure? I know the loss, but how are you coming up with that figure that you're going to gain that back?
Question for Brian Layton.
Mr. Councilman, that's based on our current tax receipts, and so we're estimating that one-third of one cent and projecting that out after the loss of the sales tax from the Kianta Mine and NGS. So today, if you were to calculate that out, you know, it's, it's too much. We're looking at it next year as, as Kianta comes off our rolls, that's the projection that we're using. So it's based off of those numbers.
I guess what I was thinking of is when you said everybody shares into it, which is awesome, so more people keep traveling, the more revenue we can have for this, obviously. So, okay.
Are there any other questions from the council?
All right, more than anything, we want to educate, so we want people to know what they're voting for, and we, whatever their position is, they need to go out and vote and make, make that known. So thank you so much for your time, thank you for what you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Layton, and thank you again, Brad Carline, and our Chairman Williams. Moving on, we now will move to the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item off the consent calendar? Or open the item for discussion? Be on no action. The consent calendar we have is consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement for regional transit services, accepting the Eighth Street Improvements Project and City Council minutes for the September fourth regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? And do we have a second? Any further discussion with regard to that? Let's move on to a vote. Do we have a favor, all in favor of the motion, please manifest by a raised hand? See, that passes five to zero. I counted right. New business, first item under new business is to award a maintenance contract for city-owned landscaping, Mr. Brimhall.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Council. In early March 2017, staff contacted several local landscaping contractors to provide landscape maintenance services for city-owned property. Staff subsequently awarded a contract, It's Magic Incorporated, in late March to maintain the landscaping on a monthly basis at city facilities. The scope of work was expanded since that time by adding weed control, sprinkler maintenance, and landscaping at other city facilities, which now exceeds the fifty-thousand-dollar limit allowed for city manager approval under the city's purchasing policy. In addition, the council approved a budget increase in fiscal year 2019 for contractual services to further enhance efforts to maintain and beautify city-owned properties. To allow for an expanded scope, staff has drafted a new contract with It's Magic Incorporated. The contract will cover landscape maintenance, sprinkler maintenance, and weed control for city-owned properties, and those are listed below. And with that, if I can answer any questions, council might have.
Questions of the council? Do we have a motion? Go ahead.
We have historically had city employees do the landscaping, et cetera. Is this saving the city money?
We did a comparison, I think a couple of years ago when we first discussed this possibility, and we found that it did. We were actually using a very small amount of full-time city employees to work and do the landscape maintenance. What we were doing was we were contracted, we had a contract with a temporary service in town, and those folks would be doing that landscape maintenance. And it was hard, it was difficult to find the right people who would be dedicated to working the right amount of time to get the job done. And as we did the comparison, we found that it indeed did save the city money to do it this way.
Go on, Joe.
Just curious, so it's been a year, a little over a year, that has had response time like on brook or sprinkler heads, or is this something that happens right away, or is it something two days later? Is it working well enough that we don't have to shut down a system? Because you know, as well as I do, if you shut anything down, especially in the summer, for two or three days, it goes to the tank, so...
It's really hard to get on top of stuff once it's, once it's down. Honestly, I don't remember any large-scale system failures, these guys are on top of it.
Because you're talking twenty-thousand-dollar increase roughly?
Yeah.
Other questions from the council? Do we have a motion by the council to accept?
I move to award the contract for landscape maintenance of city-owned landscaping to It's Magic Incorporated in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand.
And we have a second by John Leach.
Second.
John's, John's already second.
We can do two or three, since there's five of us up, let's get involved.
Next item is consider...
You need to vote.
Well, I vote, I forgot to raise my hand.
Although, we all need to vote. None of us voted, we don't have to.
I call for the vote.
Yeah.
I knew I forgot myself.
That's because you forgot us, too.
Left you behind. Next item is consider accepting the McCarty Lift Station in Forest Main, Mr. Carter.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. In two thousand, the developers of White Mountain Vacation Village constructed a private lift station in approximately twenty-four hundred linear feet, a four-inch force main to serve a portion of the development. This infrastructure was designed and constructed to city standards. In 2012, the owners of the development approached the city, asking the city to take over this facility. As a private facility, this lift station served and could only serve properties in the White Mountain Vacation Village. As a public lift station, the facility can serve additional properties in the area. Staff inspected the facilities and provided a list of required improvements before the city could take possession of the lift station. The improvements included replacing internal piping with stainless steel piping and check valves, repairing the electrical panel and installing an additional pump. These improvements have been completed and inspected and approved by city staff. Forest Main lies within a sixteen-foot-wide private sewer easement and within tracks A and B on the final plat. The acceptance of, the acceptance of the lift station in Forest Main will be contingent on the private sewer easement being converted to a public sewer easement. Staff recommends accepting the White Mountain Vacation Village's McCarty Lift Station and Forest Main contingent upon the private sewer easement being converted to a public sewer easement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council?
I just probably got a dumb comment here. So is that going to be good for more development behind that? We don't have to go back in there and resize that, it's ready to go? Because obviously, where that's at, there's probably going to be more development there, we're hoping someday.
It's got additional capacity with, with changing the, the timing and the, and the float levels and things like that, we can get additional capacity in there if we had a large development, say Ellsworth Heights, you know, in the past they've expressed interest in annexing into the city, we may have to do some modifications to that to give it some capacity, but it does have additional capacity.
Are there further questions from council? Do we have a motion? And do we have a second?
I'd like to read the motion.
Okay.
I move to accept the White Mountain Vacation Village McCarty Lift Station in Forest Main contingent upon the private sewer easement being converted to a public sewer easement.
And do we have a second?
Second.
John Leach for a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. That passes five to zero.
Left or right?
Left or right, I got you there. This brings us to a summary of current events. Does any council member have anything to report?
Tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, nine o'clock, we have the White Mountain Business Owners Roundtable at Torian. We would invite the people that own a business in town to come there. I think it's ten dollars or something like that.
Eleven-thirty tomorrow.
Oh, eleven-thirty, I apologize, that is the chamber board meeting that goes earlier. It is eleven-thirty in the morning. Lunch will be served, and you can do an awful lot of interfacing with other businesses, other people, and learn an awful, awful lot about what's going on in the city. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have something. I'd like to express my appreciation to those in the community that supported the Guns and Hoses softball game. I'd like to compliment one of my fellow council members for his participation in providing foodstuffs for people that were hungry and needing sustenance. It was a very fruitful undertaking, the fundraising went quite well. There's been a couple of others, donation or fundraisings that have gone on beforehand that we managed to garner a good support from the community, and I appreciate, and I'd like to acknowledge personally, but I can't do it at this point, but acknowledge all of those that made donations and contributions to make that such a success. Really thank you. And then, or city manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. There's just a few things to report tonight. We have three events this week sponsored by the Recreation Department. The first is a free movie in the park on Friday, seven PM at the Panderosa Field in City Park. They'll be showing the Infinity War, Avengers and Infinity War. On Saturday, we have a community yard sale from eight AM to noon at Frontier Fields Parking Lot with ten-by-ten spaces available for ten dollars. And also on Saturday, we have the Itty-Bitty Olympics for boys and girls six years old and younger at the senior field at City Park. And registration for that event, it will begin at ten-thirty at the concession stand, five dollars per athlete, followed by the events at eleven o'clock. If you need more information on any of these events or other events from Parks and Rec Department, you can call five-three-two-fourty-one-forty. And just a little review on public works projects, we have a city contractor, a contractor working on a sidewalk improvement project on Eighth Street and McNeil. There will be periodic closures on either Eighth Street or McNeil, it won't happen at the same time, they're going to leave one of the roads open. We anticipate the project will be completed around the end of October. The runway, as you know, the runway rehabilitation project at the airport is underway and should be completed in the next three or four weeks, and crews are also fixing utility patches around town and mowing along the roadways. We have quite a bit of weeds this year, and you've probably seen the crews out, taking care of the weed problem, so just be careful, and we appreciate your patience if you have a project going in your neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mutter. This brings us to scheduling of meetings. Mr. Mutter?
As I think the council is aware, we need to schedule a meeting for the council to interview candidates for the Planning and Zoning Commission and for Board of Adjustment. We have four candidates for one vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission and another candidate for Board of Adjustment. We're suggesting that we do this at your next meeting on October second at five-forty-five PM to start the meeting at five-forty-five. Just wanted to make council aware of that, I believe you all have confirmed you'll be able to be there, so just wanted to double-check.
Well, yeah, but we have a meeting right before that, right? There's one on foot signs, has that been moved, canceled?
At three o'clock, we have a meeting on that.
What's at three?
Mm-hmm. And that's just you and the mayor, so...
You said five-forty-five?
Five-forty-five. That way you'll be able to interview all five candidates and then probably make the appointments during the regular council meeting after at seven o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Mutter. Would anyone like back in? Would anyone like back in? There's nothing coming. We'll say we're seeing no further business and I'm going to gavel it close. Thank you.